The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cramley, we will call the roll.
Mr. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Deming?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Adova?
Here.
Mr. Sarnes?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
Dr. Yernell?
Here. Thank you. At this point, we will have comments and questions from guests. Please state your name and your municipality of residence, and we would appreciate it if you would limit it to three minutes or less. The only name I have on the comment sign-in sheet is Mrs. Furlong.
Sue Furlong, West Rock Hill Township. I have two different people who are interested in the textbooks that you're disposing of, so I would like to make sure that...I'll call Kathy, but it had been rumored that they were going directly to the recycle bin rather than being put out to bid. As was discussed in the committee meeting, I'd like to confirm that they will be available for parties that would like to bid on those.
And down with the books you're talking about, Mrs. Furlong.
Oh, there are textbooks: science, math, and I believe English is the other one. And maybe there was a misquote in the...what was on the website, but one of the two parties had the impression that it was going directly to recycle. If I look at the notes tonight, it appears that it's going onto the surplus. So it will be on surplus? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Furlong. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of the minutes for our last meeting on July 28th, as well as the bills list, capital projects bills list, self-insurance, student activity, food service bills lists, the financial reports, and the superintendent's personnel report and addendum. I would note that there are some changes. There are three o additions from the superintendent's personnel report that were given to me just tonight, and they would be on page five. Sorry, not page five, let's try page six. Page six, the second name down under the retirement resignation leaves, that's being omitted. Also, on page 15, the assistant football coach middle school for North is being omitted, as well as the wrestling head coach middle school for North. So those three names are being removed from this superintendent's personnel report. Are there any of these items that board members would like voted on separately?
Yes, I'd like to vote on the personnel reports separately.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if not, do we have a motion for items A through G excluding the superintendent's personnel report?
It's a void.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Deming and seconded by Mrs. Yardley to approve the consent calendar, items A through G. Comments or questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. At this point, I would like to have a motion for...to approve the superintendent's personnel report.
I was wondering if we could separate it from page 15 on, which is all the EDR contracts?
Do you want to give a motion?
Okay. I would like to separate the superintendent's personnel report into two sections of page one through 14, and then 15 through 17.
Do we have someone who would second the motion to approve items, the first 14 pages, everything up until the extra duty contracts?
Okay.
So Mrs. Yardley has moved that we approve that. Mrs. Schmidt has approved it, or has seconded the motion. Comments or questions on that section of the superintendent's personnel report? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Now, a motion for the last part of this, the extra duty contracts, do we have a motion to approve the extra duty contracts listed on pages 15 through 17? A motion?
Okay, I'll move to approve that.
Okay, do we have a second? Silence. I'll second it. All right, Mr. Sarnes, thank you. Motion by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mr. Sarnes. Comments or questions on this motion?
I'm confused why we're doing that. Are we allowed to talk about that? I'm not exactly sure. Did you send out an email late in the day or something?
No, I just...rather than there's something in the EDR contracts, I have a problem with it. I'm going to vote against that, so I don't want to vote against the whole personnel report. That's why.
Any other comments about this? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries seven one. Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to the student liaison report. Mr. Collins?
I don't hear very clearly, but is it okay if we can just talk louder? It's on, I can hear my son. All right. So, thank you once again for having me. Just like you, we have a quick thing for the student report. First off, just a reminder, we have our paint-out game, paint-out football game, October 2nd, and we'll be selling T-shirts that entire week. And out of recommendation and suggestions from teachers at other buildings, we will...we are planning to have order forms go out to all of the other Penrich buildings to see if teachers are interested in purchasing the shirts as well. Additionally, our homecoming festivities are the week of October 20th. Just working on just normal progression of planning. This week, student council members are actually working on a few things for the district. Tomorrow, student council members will be at Penrich High School and throughout the district helping teachers set up their classrooms, stamp books, whatever they really need. And then Thursday, upperclassmen will be giving tours for the freshmen and new student orientation. And finally, a new event that is kind of in the planning, kind of in just discussion phase, is called Harvest Fest, and this is going to be similar to a summer carnival festivities. The organizers of that event have met with Mr. Boner, the high school principal, about it. I would like to give more details, but out of concern for anything changing, as this is a new event, I don't want to give too many specifics. But other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Can you tell us again when that last event is?
We are planning the event for mid-October.
Jesus.
We are planning the event for mid-October, but just because it's a new event, we're trying to get everything rolling, so we don't have anything set, don't we?
Is it going to be connected to homecoming, or it's going to be...
Not at this point.
Okay, great.
Thank you. In doing the president's report, I'm going to touch base on the beginning of school. Obviously, next Tuesday is the first day of school here in Penrich, and we're looking forward to that. I had the good fortune of being here on Friday, as I am many Fridays, and bumped into some very enthusiastic new teachers that I think we are welcoming to the Penrich School District. I look forward to their contributions to the district. They seemed extremely enthusiastic. They probably thought I was a little out of my mind, because I really wasn't dressed to give that sort of presentation. I was here really casually, but... And we want to make sure that we note that Dr. Rattigan is finishing her first year with us officially in the district, first as the CEO and as of November 1st, the superintendent. And we want to thank her for her efforts and all the challenges that she's faced in this first year. We are in the process of finishing her evaluation, a board that is, and it will be posted on the website once that is done. We also want to note that we have a number of contracts and agreements that are outstanding. This is an unusual year. In the investment business, they talk about a triple witching hour. Well, this year it turned out to be a quadruple witching hour for the district, in that we had either contracts for...well, contracts for the professional staff and for the support staff that are in the process of being negotiated, as well as agreements for the Act 93, I'm sorry, administrators, and the cafeteria staff. Tonight, we are concluding the Act 93 agreement, so we have started to settle those, but obviously they can be very difficult, especially in the current challenging economic times. So I look forward to a good school year. I think Dr. Rattigan won't have any lack or dearth of challenges in this school year either, and hopefully those contracts can be settled, as well as the agreements in the foreseeable future. I do want to touch base very briefly on the fact that we are missing a board member tonight. Mr. Thompson is at the shore, but unlike most of us who would go to the shore, he is in the hospital, so we wish him well and a swift recovery so that he is back and joins us soon. I hear he may be back Wednesday night when we have a meeting, but in the meantime, we will assume that he is on the road mending, and he will be out of the hospital soon. So that's what I have to say tonight, and we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Rattigan?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Yernell. I would like to first thank the high school for their presentation, the room displays in the boardroom, which is where we now have the committee meetings. As you know, we're now in here, and each month we try to make it a little bit better. This month, as you see, we have partitions here, we have the Penrich School sign, so thank you to Mr. Loffler and his staff for trying to help us. You see our formation here is a little bit better, so that we can all see one another. So we're learning as we go. But I really don't have any announcements to make as far as academics or curricula, because students have not been competing and taking tests, they've been practicing. So that being said, if you have been out to the field, you will see a big difference. At Popayoda Field, the bleachers are now demolished, and here at the Hellman Field, the progress has been unbelievable, outstanding, just the workers, and every day you just you see a transformation. In fact, Mr. Ferry will have some pictures on the website tomorrow with the latest updates of everything that's happening. But I would like to give a special thank you to anyone who worked this summer. I mean, sometimes people think in the world of education, well, what are you doing? There are no students here, there are no teachers here, what's there to do in the summer? Well, as Dr. Yernell said, we are hiring a lot of staff members, we're getting our buildings ready, our grounds ready, and it's just impressive, the transformation that happens over the summer. So thank you to all the administrators, support staff, certified staff who have been here working diligently. I'm confident we will be ready for the start on Tuesday. So that's my report, Dr. Yernell.
Thank you. We'll move to the committee reports, and the first one is activities. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. The activities committee did not meet. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 10th in the district doctors at 7:30.
Thank you. Academic performance committee. There was originally a meeting scheduled for the 18th of August that was canceled, and the next one that is scheduled now will be September 15th, 2014. It also will be in the district administration offices at 7:30 p.m. Facilities, Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Tonight, we have...first, the facilities committee met on August 11th. Tonight, there's three motions in our section. First motion is to obsolete items listed as below, section 1A through I.
Did you make that as a motion?
Yes, that's the motion.
Motion to obsolete items as listed below. Thank you. Moved by Mr. Casper and seconded by Mr. Deming to approve the obsoleted items. Comments or questions from board members? Not all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Second motion is to approve the district's participation in the PPL rebate program to install room sensors.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper and seconded by Mr. Rulman. Thank you. Comments or questions on this rebate program? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mr. Casper? Mr. Casper, on this next motion, would you be so kind as to just make the motion subject to solicitor review? I have one minor change that I recommend to Terra Form Agreement, which is to add a provision that allows the district to terminate it for convenience on some short period of notice. So assuming you're okay with that and the rest of the board is, I'd ask you to just state the motion that way, and I'll add it to the copy at here, assuming the board approves it, back to Yernell, and sign that version. That's fine with everyone.
So, the motion will be the motion. And the addition will be subject to review.
Yes, please.
So the third motion is to approve Dewey Engineering Inc. to proceed with design and bid documentation related to Hellman Field Phase II design review, drawings including the erosion and sediment controls investigation, survey, and design as outlined in the proposal from Terra Form Engineers LLC to Dewey Engineering Inc., subject to review by our solicitor.
Do you have a second to the revised motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Sarnes to approve the design bid documentation. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mr. Casper?
The next facility committee meeting is scheduled for September 8th, 2014.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Sarnes?
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. The finance committee also met on August 11th, and we have several motions. So first is a motion to approve contracts as listed below, which are A through H.
Do we have a second to that motion for contract approval?
Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mr. Casper to approve contracts. Comments or question from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mr. Sarnes?
The next is a motion to approve the student activity request as listed below, letters I through X. The numbers, I guess.
Yes.
The numbers, how's that?
Yes. Do we have a second to that motion, too?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes and seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve student activity requests. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mr. Sarnes?
The next is a motion to approve settlement agreements identified as 2015-05 and 2014-27.
Do you have a second to the motion on settlement agreements?
Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mr. Casper. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mr. Sarnes?
And the final one is a motion to reject the repository sale for $100.
Do you have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to reject the repository sale on the amount of $100. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Mr. Sarnes?
The next finance committee meeting is scheduled for September 8th.
Thank you. We'll move to the intermediate meeting. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. CIU did not meet in August. We are scheduled to meet September 16th at 7:00 p.m. at the ECI unit in Dualestown.
Thank you. And personnel, Mr. Deming?
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. We have one motion, and that is to approve the Act 93 agreement for the tournament 2014, 2015, through the years 2017, 2018.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Seven.
Moved by Mr. Deming, seconded by Mrs. Miller to approve the Act 93 agreement. I made some changes to this agreement as well. I neglected to get my comments from Ms. Johnson and Phil this afternoon, so not all of them appeared in the version that's in front of you. They're not. I circulated them to the board members on the team, and I think they'll approve me that they aren't particularly substantive, but some of them were qualifying, and I think are full of work. So if that motion also could be made, subject to solicitor review, I can build those changes into the final version that gets signed. So Mr. Deming, Mrs. Miller? Sorry to belabor the record. So this motion now reads, not only will it be the approval, but subject to solicitor review. Other comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries eight zero. Thank you. Next, we will move to the... I'm sorry, yes, you should give us the next date. I apologize.
Oh, well, it's August, but hey. And our next personnel meeting is going to be scheduled for September 5th, 19...excuse me, 2014.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move to the policy review committee. Mr. Deming?
And again, Dr. Yernell, the next policy review committee meeting is scheduled for September 10th, 2014.
Thank you. We'll move to the Upper Bucks County Technical Committee. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. There were two meetings in August at the Upper Bucks County Tech School. First was on August 7th. It was a brief meeting. It was basically in regard to the construction. One was...motion was for electrical service modifications. The second was for a change order in regard to asbestos abatement. Second meeting was on August 21st. There was a report by Mrs. Hill in regard to their enrollment. Their enrollment currently, as of last Thursday, was 696 versus their enrollment last year at the end of the year of 583, so they're seeing an increase in their enrollment. There was a Carl D. Perkins grant, which was approved. The grant came in slightly lower than was budgeted, but it came in at $126,000. There was a motion on cafeteria pricing, which was approved with no changes. School physician was voted on. Animal technology and cosmetology fee schedules were voted on. The adult education, there was a motion to...which approved online credit card registration to help in their registration for the adult evening classes. Student activity counts were voted on, existing and two new ones, one for National Technical Honor Society and Small Engine Technology Program. And then there were three motions for Skills USA, which was in regard to student participation, one for development conference, one for ambassador training, and the other was for competitions. And last was obsolete equipment voted on and approved. And the next meeting will be September 18th at 7:30 at the Upper Bucks Tech School.
Thank you. I would simply add briefly to that that we are still hoping to conclude our negotiations with the teaching staff. We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday night, one of these days. I assume I will be able to come here and report that that has been concluded so far. We are still working on it, so stay tuned. In terms of the technology committee, Mr. Thompson, as I know, is not here, and that committee does not have a meeting scheduled, but will be scheduled when needed. Act 48 is next, and that's Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. The Act 48 committee did not meet in August, but their next meeting is scheduled for October 9th at 4:00 p.m. at the district office.
Thank you. Also, the ad hoc fundraising committee, Mrs. Yardley or Mrs. Schmidt, who's going to comment on that?
Mrs. Schmidt, yes. The ad hoc fundraising committee met on August 13th. It was...meeting began at 7:30. There were no comments from the public. Discussion began on fundraising options. Some of the discussion was on advertising in schools, and athletic facilities was discussed. Samples of advertising pricing from North Penn and Upper Dublin school districts were shown. Joe Ferry and Dr. Bavard will be getting additional information on advertising revenues from school districts Parkland, Pensbury, North Penn, and Upper Dublin. Other options that were discussed were naming rights and sponsorship based on various levels of donation, as well as possible alumni contributions, capital campaign, papers, and seating memorials. There was discussion on setting a fundraising goal, drafting a fundraising brochure, which Mr. Ferry said that he would work on, and a budget for fundraising campaign. There was also discussion on setting up a fundraising timeline and a campaign name. The goal is for board approval at the 9/22 board meeting for a proposed timeline and fundraising campaign. There was also discussion on possible kickoff meeting with local businesses and supporters at either the first home game on September 26th or a later date in October. And also discussion on creating a list of potential donors and partners within the community to work with the ad hoc fundraising committee. The next meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, August 27th at 7:30 in the district office building, and the meeting was adjourned at 8:30.
Thank you. At this point, unfinished business, board members. Anyone have unfinished business? Mrs. Yardley?
Yeah. The committee of the whole meeting in July, there was the item about the football ticket pricing, and we needed more information, and then it was brought up at the finance committee meeting, I believe that was August 11th, and it's not on the agenda, so I don't know if we're supposed to vote on that.
Dr. Bavard talked to me before the meeting, Mrs. Yardley, and we'll give that to the activities.
So it's going to be discussed again?
Maybe, Dr. Yernell. For September? Go to September.
The first home game, from what I understand, is September 29th, is that correct?
Yes.
As I said, September 26th. And the only discussion really is, all tickets right now are $5, except for high school students from Penrich, and they charge $4. The proposal is for them to be...have an opportunity during the day, and I talked to Ms. Boner, in the cafeteria to buy their tickets for $4, but anybody who shows up at that game night that night will pay $5 like everybody else. But we can go over this, there's plenty of time, have a discussion. I was the one who needed to be there for both those meetings to discuss that, how it will be done. I've done it in other school districts, and Ms. Boner has done it up at Easton, so just because we haven't sold them in the cafeteria here does not mean that we cannot do that. So I'll be glad to discuss it, but there's enough time for you to approve it in September and have it enacted for that home first home game. And we're going to encourage kids in high school, buy it on Friday in school.
So you're just waiting to work out the details of how it's going to be set up for the students?
No, Ms. Boner, we're going to have two people from our staff, somebody from probably the athletic office, and one of the ladies in our office, who is with...who does the books, the record keeping, just go down to the three lunches and sell them. So, but the thing is, I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to talk about it, ask any questions.
It'll be on the candidates' agenda.
Correct. I will tell you the same thing then that I'm telling you now, if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer it.
All right, thank you.
And I know we'll discuss it further then, but one question just to bring to that meeting, which I have now, is how are we handling it at the middle school level? Because if you're offering a discount to high school students, you have middle school students that will attend the game that won't be given the option to then pay the $5 at the gate.
That was already approved, that they already paid $5. The only group that gets the $4...gets the $1 discount is the high school students, because it's their game and their activity. Everybody else pays $5, including visitors that come from the other high schools. So the board had already approved that.
Previously?
Yes, previously. We were just trying to make sure that the night of the game, to get everybody in, because if you went to the games last year, that was a problem, because you were now selling, giving change, giving a ticket, going through it. Saves one step to get everybody through the lines faster. We were trying to get everybody inside the gate. There was one game, board members reported, it took up to close to halftime to get everybody off the street. So the goal is, they'll have an opportunity to buy it, buy it ahead of time, help us out so we can get you in the gate and watch the game.
Thank you. Anyone else on unfinished business? Mrs. Miller?
Yes, I have a question. And I have missed a few meetings, so excuse me if I've...this has been recorded. The band trailer, that was tabled about two meetings ago. Has there been any progress on that, or any movement on that to bring that back to the board? I understand there was money put aside for that in the budget, in just budget, and then the PMA was asked to...you know, we got a listing with our financials. Has anything occurred since then? Have I missed something? Because I haven't seen it.
No, I don't think you've missed anything. Do you have any...not at all. So no, it has not been acted on.
Not been, do you know when we're going to act upon it? Or discuss it? I don't know, let me answer me. Mr. Cox, do you know?
Well, I don't know, I think the administration brings it to us. I don't know if we take it to them. I agree with what you're saying.
It was tabled two months ago.
It kind of fell off the radar. But how do you, who wants to bring it back on the radar? And I guess that's the question. Where does that start? Where did it start in the first place? Like where would the process begin? So.
I have no idea.
It seems kind of odd that it just disappeared, and we didn't really, I mean, the last, as we just stated, we were waiting for some more financial data, which I think they did tonight, so everybody look at that.
And also, if I recall, and I think even you told me directly, that there was fifty thousand dollars, I thought, and again, I could be wrong, that was in Jeff's budget, targeted just for that purpose. So I understood there was money already there assigned to that. So I'm just a little confused, because now the season's certainly punished.
I think when all this sort of got off the track, or I shouldn't say off the track, but there was, it was originally, initially in the budget somewhere, and then all types of safety issues were brought to our attention, and then it kind of came off of the agendas, substantive agendas, and then it led to like the finance decision, you know, how much should we, should we buy the whole thing, should they contribute?
Correct.
So, I mean, if it needs to come back to a committee, I mean, then it should.
And can I say, the one, the one concern I do have is that a board member was very specific that she was in attendance of watching it being loaded, and she stated it was an unsafe condition.
I just stated that, and also my concern was, and it may not have been communicated, and I don't know if my message didn't come across, but I know that it was misunderstood, that my concern was also, were procedures being followed? Because I know in previous meetings, Mr. Benson, the band director, had been questioned in regard to students following procedures with handling the amount of equipment and working that truck. And what my question was, and concern was, were those procedures being followed that were put in place for him to communicate to his band members?
Did we get an answer to that? I mean, the whole thing just went.
It did, it did. And, you know, I agree, we got the financials, but there were still questions that were out there that were posed. I know, Dr. Yarnell, you had, you know, stated that, a question in regard to, was the PMA going to contribute to this?
Yes.
I know I commented on that as well, and we got financial information, but those questions never got answered. So I agree, I think it needs to go back to a committee level, because the discussion dropped, but there were a lot of questions to be answered yet. And, you know, in regard to what I was stating, my question was also about were procedures being followed, or what exactly was happening when I witnessed these, you know, students riding this late gate?
How do we bring this back to and get these questions answered and discussed and decisions made?
Well, I would assume we have to go back to one of the committees. Originally, it was done in facilities. Now, if that's where it's going to be done, I would presume any further questions need to be answered at the September eighth. Am I correct? That's the date, the facilities? Mr. Casper?
The next one is September eighth. So if the administration wants to put it on there, that's great.
Can that be added, and all the questions that people have addressed to?
Then maybe we can come to some kind of, you know, final, final position on, because it went from way back when to almost being approved to no.
Yes.
I mean, it would probably have been approved if not for the safety concerns. I don't know why, I don't know how, I can't remember that, there's a lot of other things going on. But we should get it back if they, if they've given us what we need.
Thank you.
So the administration will bring us financial information from the, from the budget as well, and the safety issue.
Yes, the questions answered, not only on the safety, but also the questions that we did raise too. I mean, like I said, the financial information that they provided to us, we could explain that portion of it, but the question was, are they willing to contribute?
Does that satisfy?
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell, appreciate it.
Anyone else for unfinished business? If not, new business? No, then we'll move to announcements. The next regular scheduled board meeting is going to be held here, Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, at seven thirty P.M. There will be an executive session held tonight for Personnel Matters. There also was an executive session held on August twentieth for Personnel Matters as well. At this point, we will move to comments and questions from guests. Please give us the name, municipality, and three minutes. Anyone who should comment. Mrs. Furlong?
Sue Furlong, West Rockville Township. At the bottom of the list, it said the math books were going to be recycled. I would like to, I don't know if that differs from what you're telling me, that they're going to be built upon, that they're going to be.
They should be going to public switches.
Okay, so they will, so the math books will also go to public, okay, surplus. My other concern is, if you're selling tickets in the cafeteria at the high school, which is fine, I think that's a great idea. However, I do believe that there needs to be a good record of what tickets were sold. Those are four dollar tickets versus five dollars for most of the sales at the gate. Those tickets need to be accounted for with a beginning ticket number, an ending ticket number, and accounting for all the tickets in between, and for every ticket that's not turned back in, there should be four dollars. Those tickets should be maybe red, whereas the five dollar tickets should be blue, with a total accounting for those as well. Also, if you're going to have, it's not funny, you're talking about, if you have two thousand people at five dollars per person, you have ten thousand dollars in cash, small bills. And you can't run that like you've got a cigar box, and that doesn't count whatever you may do at your concession stand. And that money needs to be properly accounted for, using good techniques for cash management, and we have policies that say that there'll be no fraud, that be proper handling of cash, et cetera, et cetera. So when those tickets are sold, they need to be accounted for, because that's a four dollar ticket, not a five dollar ticket. And in order for Ms. Johnson to be able to say what was the gate at the football event or any other event, those events need to be properly documented in terms of how many tickets were sold at the various prices, and this is how we know how much we made at the gate. You cannot have two thousand people, three thousand people at five dollars a head, bringing in ten to fifteen thousand dollars, and run it like it's a mom, pa, and a maid stand.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Celeste Ferrera. I'm in Perksy Borough, resident. I'm a taxpayer, and I am a parent, and a very concerned parent. Number one, I know you brought up the matter of concern of the band truck, trailers that was asked to be done, you know, to buy for us. I say asked, because I am a parent of a band child. I've been a parent of a band child for the last five or six years. My first daughter graduated in two thousand thirteen, and my second one will be graduating two thousand fifteen. And as a band parent, I think that it's a shame that we know that there's a safety issue with the truck, and we know there's been a safety issue with the truck, and we've asked, and it's been delayed, put off to the side, because there are other things that were more important than the safety of our children. And that's how I feel about it. Another matter is not only, when Pop Yoda came up and Hillman Field, we made that decision, okay, we're all going to be up here at the Hillman Field. Well, there are other organizations that are involved with that field. It's not just football, okay? There are bands, there are cheerleaders, there are other organizations that use that field. There's an Ad-Hoc Fundraising Committee. Why was not, one of the other organizations have somebody on that committee also? I mean, the first time I heard about it, I, I see it on tape, on YouTube, concerning the last meeting that's, I was shocked, because I didn't know about it. I tried to come to as many board meetings as I possibly could, but it's been difficult. But there should be more people involved with it, and I think that these organizations, whenever we put an invoice, invoice, a request for some type of fundraiser for our organizations, whether it's band, whether it's cheerleading, whether it's water polo, whatever it is, that we should be given a decision right away, whether we can do what we want for the fundraising, because we have activities, we have people going on trips. We have to know if we can fundraise for those people. If we can't do that, then we have to know now what we need to do. But right away, other things were decided, that now we're having this fundraising committee for the field, the how we're going to raise funds for that, which we already know is coming out of taxpayer money for it, which is great, okay? So spend taxpayer money on buying this truck for the band people, because they need it, and stop sitting around, do something right for a change for our kids. Don't put their safety in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Recently, there were some changes made if you wanted to participate as a chapter on the school district. And I currently am undergoing the new process to do that. The process does not seem to be standardized across the district. The forms that are required to be submitted are not identical from website to website for school building. And the forms are domiciled in the building, not at the district level. I'm raising this concern because I recently submitted my forms to the state after getting the state police clearance, due to them requiring to submit to the child abuse hotline. I noted that on all of those forms, no one required my social security number, but the Penridge School District does. That's fine, I put it on there, but my form is sitting in a binder in an open office, along with every other person who transfers a form in. So I would like to know what measures the district has in place, because you've assigned this out to building assignment, what you're going to do for identity theft protection. I fill out a credit card application, I get a pamphlet that tells me what my rights are for identity theft. You've asked me to sign over, and it's a notarized form nonetheless. So you have a notary signature that matches my ID to my social security number, and now you are in possession of it. The state forms don't even require your social security number. They verify it through alternate means in the databases. And once you have your criminal background checked, done with the state police, the state child abuse tiles it back to that criminal check number. They don't even ask for your social security number, but Penridge does. So I would like to know what measures the district is putting in place for identity theft protection.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions for the press?
Kyle Banks, City Intel. I was wondering, the DUE engineering agreement tonight, does that include the full specs I presented originally of the building that we talked about, and also the parking lot and the bus roundabout, if you recall?
Yes, the decision was made to include everything. Not everything may be constructed, but the specs would be down on everything.
And then is the parking, the extra parking area as well?
Any other comments or questions for the press? If not, thank you very much for coming. Good night.